Twenty twenty four at seven o'clock. Roll call, Councilmember Coley.
Present.
Councilmember Easton.
Here.
Councilmember Hilbert.
Present.
Councilmember Montague III.
Present.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Summers Johnson.
Here.
And also, Council President. Here. Also President. Chris M. Hart, Re- the Business Administrator. No, I was looking for Derrick Brown. Gracia R. Montellus, City Attorney. Marlin G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer. Representative from the Police Department.
Not here.
No. And Tricia Cipio, City Clerk's Office. Do we have it at the first meeting? No. Can we please have a moment of silence?
Council President, can we just use this time to, for those five victims in Newark, that fire that's raging out of control at this point in time?
Sure. Thank you. Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign their name on the comment sign-up sheet and will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to interact with the council. This is a conference meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Where did I just say that?
The requirements.
Okay. The requirements of NJSA ten colon four dash nine et cetera, sunshine law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, published in the Record Transcript on July eleventh, twenty twenty four, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, council's website, city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Council President, do we have any matters of discussion?
No.
There is no matters of discussion. Councilmembers, are there any resolutions or ordinances on tonight's agenda that you wish to discuss at this time?
Council President.
Councilwoman Hilbert.
Yes, I just had a question regarding Resolution four ninety-four dash twenty twenty four through you to the Law Department. This is a settlement, but it was no admission on the city's behalf. But was there any administrative or HR action scheduled or planned just to add some preventative measures or to educate the staff on protecting themselves and the city from this reoccurring?
So, given that this is a litigation matter, I will not answer that in open form, but I could certainly, to the extent that council wants to have a closed session, I could certainly answer the question then, or if you want to come to my office, but I can't answer it in this form.
I understand that. That's why I was just throwing it out there, it wasn't positive, but I could resubmit, like maybe like an email or something.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that. I kind of started off pretty heavy. I also had a question regarding forty-eight, sorry, four eighty-five dash twenty twenty four, that emergency contract. So through you to the Business Administrator, this was, this work was already done?
Yes. The gen electric contract was exhausted. The amount appropriated was exhausted earlier in the year, so we're doing all of the electrical work that comes up on an emergency basis with that company.
Oh, so they went over that amount, though, over their limit previously, okay. Okay, that is all for my questions, thank you.
And Council, Council President.
Councilwoman Montague.
Through you to BA, can you give us, give a little clarity towards Resolution four ninety-five? Could you explain that for us?
Sure. Four ninety-five is the issuance and/or the rollover of notes that the city has previously authorized. It breaks down like this. The new notes include four million dollars for the Phase One PFOS Treatment Plan at Chestnut Street, approximately six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the Elgin Streetsweepers, and eight hundred thousand dollars for the nine-one-one system and radio equipment for police and fire departments respectively. And then the remaining five million is for various acquisitions and improvements to the city's water and sewer system, which was adopted in November of twenty twenty-three and had previously been issued. On top of that, there's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in redevelopment area bonds. Those are two hundred and, two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollar denominations, three for two hundred, one for two fifty, totaling eight fifths. And those have also previously been issued and are being rolled over.
Thank you so much.
Council President.
Councilwoman Ross.
While we're on that, Mr. BA, can you let us know what our bond capacity is?
We have approximately eight million dollars, eight million and change before we reach our capital capacity.
Eight million?
Yes, and in twenty twenty-seven, we have a significant drop-off in debt service, so that capital capacity increases dramatically.
Okay, great, thank you. Can I still?
Sure.
Mr. BA, could you give us an explanation or give us some clarity on forty-nine twenty twenty-four, forty-four eighty-one twenty twenty-four, and forty-four eighty-two twenty twenty-four? The last meeting, there was a lot of conversations, a lot of issues regarding one hundred Main Street or these ordinance cities. So can you, it's back on the agenda today, so can you make it clear to everybody why it's back on the agenda and what happened from the last meeting, why it's back tonight?
First of all, these items are assignments of existing agreements that were previously approved by the council and the administration, assignments that are occasioned by the fact that, which is common in these situations, the investment of money into a particular transaction or the construction financing. In this particular case, a new investor was taken on by one hundred South Main Street, BSD one hundred Main Street Urban Renewal Corporation. That new investor is a fifty percent ownership investor called BH one hundred Main YG LLC, which is wholly owned by Yoel Gruber. The remaining fifty percent stays with an entity that's related to the original, one of the original owners, Charles Sobel. That's one hundred VA Holdings LLC, and that has three shareholders, Hindi Sobel, Bella Newman, and Melissa Goldberg. The property address is one hundred South Main Street, that's the address for the project. The entity doing the development is BSD one hundred Main Urban Renewal LLC. They will be using ninety-one Main Street as their address, it's across the street from the project, it's been purchased by the developer. It was formerly a daycare center, it will be converted temporarily into a construction staging area and office for one hundred Main Street's development. When one hundred Main Street is complete, the office will move indoors to the office that's being built at one hundred Main. BSD one hundred Main Mez is one hundred percent owned by the previous entity, which is the Urban Renewal Corporation, and that will also operate at the same address. The two entities that own BSD one hundred Main Mez, one operates, Yoel Gruber's entity operates out of two sixty-six forty-seventh Street in Brooklyn, and one hundred VA Holdings LLC operates out of fourteen forty-nine thirty-seventh Street at four fourteen Brooklyn, my thing got cut off, in New York. So, again, they're fairly standard requests from developers once they secure construction financing or an investor, and our documents require that when that happens and there's an assignment or a change of control, that they have to come back to us for approval. I would also indicate that the Community Benefits Agreement that's being assigned has a value to the city in excess of a million dollars. So, the administration would urge affirmative action on those three items.
Okay. So you said, can you say that one more time? The community benefits are what?
In excess of a million dollars.
Okay. And, and can you make it clear once again that we now know what ninety-one Main Street is, and who owns it? Because that was the major issue last time. Someone in the ordinance asks, do you know where ninety-one Main Street is, do you know, and nobody can answer the question?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I'm good, Council President.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Council President.
Councilwoman Coley.
Thirty-two twenty twenty-four. I did, I arrived by all of the properties that are listed here that's in the east ward, and quite a few of these properties are are functioning and people are, you know, living in these properties. There are a few that are, that are lots, and there are a few that are vacant and abandoned. So, I believe that you said that this list was, it was scrubbed or it was amended before, but I don't know if that, if that happened, so.
If you look at, not the first whereas clause that lists the two and a half pages of properties, but the seventh whereas clause, which indicates the properties that it was willed down to, it's fifty-two parcels, and those fifty-two parcels have been scrubbed and continue to meet the definition of in need of redevelopment under the statute.
When, I know you're not the planning board or, you know, or, or our planning director, but a property that is designated in need of redevelopment, what, what does that look like?
So, the, I'll defer to, to council, but my understanding for a property in need of redevelopment is there's a criteria set forth in the statute. It has to be blighted, which usually means that the infrastructure is outdated or the taxes haven't been kept current, or some combination thereof, or the property is dilapidated or abandoned. Those are all separate criteria that are looked at by the planners.
Okay, again, I'm not, you know, trying to give anyone a hard time, but the, the majority of these properties that are rolled past, they, except for a few, meet that criteria, and then there was a couple, there were, there were two that I thought should be on this list. This is residential and commercial, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start at two forty-one North Day Street, but it's not on the list.
Okay.
Two forty-one North Day Street is right past Park Avenue. On the left-hand side, it's a beige or brown commercial-style building with the, with the stone front. All my years on a police department or, you know, I never seen that building functioning, but it's not on this list. And, and one seventy-seven William Street, the building right in the back of their police department, all my years of being a kid, I'm sixty years old, that building has always been vacant and abandoned, but it's not on this list.
Okay.
My question is, why and, I mean, what, why aren't those, what make those, I mean, those, those, those properties immune from being on?
They're not immune, they just weren't part of the study.
Okay.
They can definitely be referred for a study.
Okay.
So that they can be included if they meet the criteria.
Alright, so, alright, alright, thank you. That's all I have.
Council President.
Councilwoman Ross.
Four seventy, four seventy-six twenty twenty-four. Mr. BA, this is for grant funding, and I would never, ever say no to grant funding. We can get all the grants, we can't get all the grants that we could possibly use, but on this one where it says municipal, municipal building upgrades for one hundred and ninety-three thousand and change, what will that be used for?
It'll be used in this building.
In this building?
Correct.
To do what?
Lighting upgrades, electrical upgrades, wiring upgrades, etc.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Well.
Council President.
Councilwoman Hilbert.
Just to piggyback off of that, I was gonna ask the same question. Would any of that funding be used for some of the HVAC and some of the offices, or would any of that be used for the clerk's office?
Well, it can't be used to fix building structure. It can only be used for energy improvements. And so, it can't be used for HVAC either.
Okay, I do have another follow-up question in regards to, towards this. Testing for Metcalf?
Yes.
I believe that's also with Lewis Consulting Group? Yes, so it states here that they did confirm some lead in the soil back in September?
That's correct.
Will this impact the availability of the park, will some parts of it be locked off or gated off to the public?
Remains to be seen, the item that's on the agenda for this evening is for additional testing, and that will determine the exact location and degree, how far it spreads out. We've identified it in a small location, now we have to do further testing pits to see if it's spread out more than that, and that will determine what we do and how we do it in terms of if there's an area of the park that needs to be shut off or how long the remediation would take.
Okay.
We're still at a preliminary phase.
Okay, so currently, the park is still open?
Yes.
Okay, and would any of the drilling that's going to be taking place, would any of that affect the new improvements that we've done so far?
So, the three locations do not impact the tennis courts, the basketball courts, or the baseball field. It's closer to the brook.
Okay.
And one area over by the main gate.
By the main gate. What about near the basketball court?
No.
No? Okay, thank you so much.
Council President. Councilwoman Hilbert, you done, you good?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Easton.
Four eighty. The charging stations, do you know where they're going to be?
So, this grant will only pay for approximately one charging station, we've not determined the location yet. It has to be a public charging station, it can be located in parking lots or on a street. We're looking at the parking lots.
Put it in an area that's not secluded, so people can use it at night. Make sure there's, that, you know, there's some activity there, because I think people would be afraid to go there with their car. And forty-one twenty twenty-four, on your table, you have the new updated driver's license for that.
Yes.
Handicap parking. The one in the package had expired.
Yeah, the new one was sent around.
Yes, we have the new one. So, I think that's the only one I. And I also, piggybacking on Councilman Coley, visit some of these sites, on the scattered sites in my ward, and they do need a facelift, so I was able to see them, and like you said, a lot of them are vacant lots. And I guess we're hoping at some point somebody will deal something on them, or at least keep them
Clean.
Clean. Immaculate and clean and cut the grass, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Summers Johnson.
Second Ross.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-one PM. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, twenty-nine North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, following the conference meeting. Roll call, Councilmember Coley.
Present.
Councilmember Easton.
Here.
Councilmember Hilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Montague III.
Present.
Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Summers Johnson.
Here.
Council President Wooton, here. Also present is Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Gracia R. Montellus, the City Attorney, Marlin G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, and Tricia Cipio from the City Clerk's Office. The requirements of NJSA ten colon four dash nine et cetera, sunshine law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Record Transcript, published in the Star Ledger on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. We have no minutes to approve tonight.
Point of order.
Councilwoman Ross.
We forgot to pledge allegiance.
We did, I think we did it in a special.
We did it in a special.
Okay, alright.
About more revenue collection? Okay. Department of Community Affairs collected forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents in September twenty twenty-four. Planning, Department of Planning Economic Development collected two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The clerk's office, forty dollars in historic preservation, no dollars. Oprah reports. In September, we received sixty-two requests, fifty-three were completed and nine remain outstanding. Council reports.
No council reports.
No council reports, communications and petitions, we didn't receive any? Citizen comments. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so during this portion of the meeting. Speakers must sign their name on the comment sign-up sheet and approach the microphone when called upon. To allow maximum public involvement, each speaker is permitted one five-minute period to interact with the council and must provide his or her name, street address, prior to beginning any remarks. Visual aids are not permitted. Speakers are reminded to be courteous and mindful of other individuals. Each person has the right to speak on any subject, but is responsible for abuse of that right. The city bears no liability for any comments made by the public and maintain discretion to remove any person engaging in obscene or disruptive conduct. The council will consider all comments and questions and will respond if and when appropriate, which may or may not be during this meeting. Derrick Henry.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Derrick Henry. I've got address listed. Member of the Orange Port of Education.
Excuse me, Mr. Henry, could you hold for just a moment?
Yeah.
City Attorney Montulus, we discussed about people not stating their address into the record, so
My understanding is that our code mandates that individuals who are going to speak identify themselves by name and address.
So, Mr. Derrick, your address?
Nobody. Derrick Henry. Derrick Henry, you could pull this up. Sorry. I'll be shorter in my next life. My bad. Formerly of two fifty-three Ogden, currently of forty-two Lincoln. A member of the Orange Port of Ed. Going to be brief. Any statements that I make this evening do not reflect the members of the Orange Port of Education administratively or the board individually or collectively speaking. Firstly, I want to publicly answer the inquiry by Mr. Peters. Hey, Mr. Peters, sorry, I don't want to talk to you with my back turned, so just give me for a second. Alright. Look into the inquiry regarding rodentia and garbage and other stuff like that, and
Excuse me, Mr. Henry, could you please, like, I think we have a tape or something right there for people not to trip over there, and we don't want anyone to trip over it?
My bad.
Okay.
Alright.
In addition, Mr. Henry, you need to address the council, sir.
Okay, please forgive my back. I'm trying to be the good guy. That said, saw some of the pictures and spoke with Necessary Administration to see what we can do about Mr. Peters' concerns. However, there were some other interesting things in the garbage disposal at Park Avenue School, which are not of the Orange School District, such as sheet rock, mattresses, and I know that when we are, or at least in my thought process, serving seeing the food and/or other material needs of students on a daily basis, to the best of my knowledge, we're not using what appears to be hefty white tall kitchen garbage bags, which means that some of our neighbors are, you know, do I want to say allegedly dumping their garbage in ours? I know that mattresses and the sheet rock, definitely not us. And occasionally, some of those security pictures have people parking in front of our garbage disposal. So, we may need assistance, because if we put school security or our school tax dollars guarding our garbage, it's not going to be a hot look. That's number one. Number two, it was suggested that I follow up on this big turf question. So I made some phone calls, both sides of the ledger, if you want to call it that, the SDA, School Development Authority, and the DCA, Department of Community Affairs. Long story short, we could replace turf all night long. However, if we don't take care of the stormwater drainage or retention underneath it, it's going to be a recurring problem every two to four years. That said, its green acres funded, green acres protected. So, like I said, we could turf it all day long, but if we don't fix that, we're going to have the same problem, therefore, at least procedurally or theoretically speaking, the idea or the question of replacing the turf appears to be a joint necessity with the city moving forward or seeing what grants or funding are available for the stormwater drainage or retention. Or else we're going to be talking about the same turf problem in the next three to five years. Or else we're going to be talking about the same turf problem in the next three to five years. And the School Development Authority does not fund stadiums. Lastly, hey, Orange, here's a good idea when I got a copy of from the Cranford Board of Education. How about a pilot revenue sharing agreement with the Board of Education? Because, just give me like thirty extra seconds, please, thank you. Just give me thirty seconds, political courtesy. The developers are feeding us false numbers or whatever the case may be in regards to the impact studies and pretty soon we're going to have students sitting on each other's laps based on the fictitious numbers that the developers give us, so in lieu of.
Mr. Charver, your time is up.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Henry, I'm sorry.
I know, it's funny, I have a twin brother too.
I know you do.
But maybe we should start considering a revenue sharing agreement with the Board of Education. Please and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Ms. Rachel Tennant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Short person now. Rachel Tennant, four-six-one Waverly Place. I was kind of shocked to see that ordinance four-five, two thousand and twenty-four returned with a new number. Certain things with this city never dies, it just resurrects itself. But the problem is still there. And developers are making nine million a year. So I'm not sure they need any tax abatements. Okay, blighted properties. Some of these properties don't even meet the literal definition of blighted. Some of them are not badly damaged or deteriorated. And the ironic part is, most of these properties get taxed increase every year. I mean, if it's blighted, I mean, why increases the taxes year after year? Okay, let me touch on the budget. First, let me say I have four brothers. And when you have brothers, well, my brothers anyway. You have to know how to drive a stick shift, one. And you have to know how to change your oil and your spark plugs. They might do it once or twice, once they teach you. Okay? It's sort of the concept. You know, when you teach a man to fish. And with that said, when I looked at the budget, certain things that I used to go to auto parts store for, mind you, when I was a little younger, seemed overpriced. Anti-freeze. I saw one gallon anti-freeze at one point. Probably about a hundred dollars, I don't know. I don't know anti-freeze costs a hundred bucks. I know maybe twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars. I even push it to say thirty. But. So with that said, who really goes over these numbers? I've seen food on there. I saw jerk chicken, I saw rice and peas, I saw vegeta- and the price, two hundred dollars. I purchased food at dinners. But they were small and they cost about the same price. So my question is, was this for a large event? Or was this like an employee gathering? Are the taxpayers paying for employee gatherings? Is everything on the on the residents' back? I mean, when I worked and we have gatherings, you know, you bring soda, you might bring some curry chicken, you might bring some white rice. So I hope this is not on the taxpayers' back, small event. What else did I have? Okay. So can, I know you just explained about why this bill, this ordinance and resolution came back. So you guys really don't care that the developer is getting nine million? No? And it seemed like the interaction seemed a little bit staged before. You asked a question, the B A all of a sudden had the answers. Didn't have the answers the other day. And my last thing is, why, I asked last year, why aren't we renting vehicles from General Services Administration? Go through their fleet management program instead of going through, I believe you said, the enterprise? So when we go through enterprise, why aren't they repairing the cars? Why are we buying the parts? Why are we
We're not.
paying for the repairs? There's a, there's a whole list of parts being anti-freeze, a whole bunch of things being fuel injectors, rotors. So why are we buying parts if we're not using the parts to repair vehicles? Is it some of the vehicles that we're repairing? I don't know. We're buying radiators, repairing radiators.
Ms. Tennant, your time is up.
Then I got to answer at least to the buying of the parts.
So you know, we read that little comment that says we have the right to consider your questions and we will respond?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Howell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Congratulations, Adrian, for being the president.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I also want to have some good things to say.
Listen to my address, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Your address.
Okay. My name is Willor Howell, four eighty-three Mountain View Avenue. I have some good things to say about some things that I saw. At Orange Train Station, I really liked what was done with the train station and how it was integrated with the apartment building, really, really beautiful. I really like it. And also the library, the outside of the library looks really nice. Congratulations, Tennessee, for having someone giving services to clean the building. So hopefully we can get the inside more renovated, but it really looks nice.
Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to know more about the scatter sites, I noticed that four seventy-two Mountain View Avenue, these, I live on Mountain View Avenue, and I know the owners of those properties, four sixty-four, four seventy, Mountain View Avenue, four seventy-two, those houses look like their backlog is scattered sites list. I thought someone said that they would be removed. Are those houses still on the scatter site list? What is happening with those homes? Sorry. Does, can someone? Or can someone, does anybody know? Chris Hartwick?
Are you looking at the first list or the second list in the?
I don't know. But I just noticed when I saw it on the agenda that those houses were listed.
Okay, I have to go ahead and look, but my recollection makes the thing removed from the initial study.
Yeah, they were still listed right here. Yeah, they were still listed, that's why.
So they're still listed in the initial study section of the ordinance?
Oh.
But they're not listed in the final section of the ordinance where it's whittled down to fifty-two properties.
Oh, okay, alright, because that was very concerning for me. And also, I wasn't here in person to announce that September was grandparents' month. I'm also the director of the Grandparents Rights Association. And in two thousand, the United States government took away the rights, the rights for grandparents to have visitation rights and rights to privileges to, if they are taking care of grandchildren, that they have the rights to assume custody. And the reason why I know about this is I lost my son to cancer. And I was the one that was caring for his daughter. But I also lost the right to be and have custody of her. And I have not seen her in ten years. So I want to let you know about this because I want you to all help me maybe legislate with the state. I know this is not a local matter. But it, but we're all, there's several, many of us are grandparents. And hopefully you would not be in a position that I'm in. I haven't seen my granddaughter in ten years, so when my son died, I lost my granddaughter as well. And so a man created this organization. He made, I think, about ten states or have this organization, but he has retired. So I'm the director of the Grandparents Rights Association for New Jersey. It's a long story and I don't think it can be solved here. But I think we all would like to be know if our child died, that we will have access to our grandchildren. And unfortunately, your kids have to be careful who they make children with. And unfortunately, I haven't seen my granddaughter in ten years. So I did reach out to the government and they did start a bill. With the person who created the bill, it's no longer a Democrat. So it died. But I think it could be restarted. So if you could help me, I would appreciate if you could help me. I can email you, let you know more about it. Okay?
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Ms. Ariel?
I have a list of.
Ms. Sam.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just letting y'all know beforehand, I got a list of questions. And I noticed that y'all aren't answering these questions. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and ask my questions and then I'm going to email it to you guys because I really want some answers to these questions. So can we start the clock? Oh, sorry. Ayesha Samuel, four oh one Highland Terrace. So first off, can we get a list of the scattered sites, the newest one, the ones that you guys are actually talking about? The second thing is Director Mays needs to be present at these meetings going forward. The third thing is there's a sinkhole on the corner of the Service Road and Oakland Street at the bridge. It's like a big old hole, like about this big and it's sinking and it's right there at the bridge. So for me, that's a safety issue. Also, under the railroad bridge on the same street, I don't know if it's Oakford or whatever that school, Oak Street? Is that the name of the school? Oakland?
Oakland.
Oakland, okay, so that's the street that I'm talking about. It's on Oakland and the Service Road for the highway. And then under the railroad track, under the railroad bridge, there's some wires hanging up under there that people can actually pull down, so that's another safety issue. Next thing is, when are we having community meetings regarding the scattered sites? The next thing is, I went through all of these bills list and I have a question as to why we have to pay Montague three hundred and forty-nine dollars for a four-night stay? Well, that's a night, three hundred and forty-nine dollars a night for four nights that he stayed at a place. So I'm asking you guys, whenever you travel, can y'all do something about that? Because I think two hundred dollars is a good price for a hotel room and anything more than that, y'all gonna have to come out of pocket for that. Because four, three fifty a night for a room? Nah, nah. And why do we need acting public defenders? What's going on with the public defenders that we need acting public defenders? And what is the super suite two maintenance and what did they do? Because apparently they got probably about maybe five or six thousand because that's the monies that I was looking at. And what did the auditors audit? What were their findings, if any? Next thing is, what did W I M B Burt SOA Insurance do for ten thousand dollars? And why are they paying over two hundred dollars for street signs when they can get them from Amazon for thirty? Why weren't the traffic signal replayers split with East Orange for Tremont and Center? And if it was, then how much was the total cost? Because that was three hundred and something thousand dollars. And that's on the cusp of Orange and East Orange. So you guys should have like gotten together with them and been fifty-fifty on that one instead of us having to pay the whole entire thing, if that's what's occurring. Because I don't know, so that's why I'm asking. So why are LLCs, oh wait, hold up. Yeah, why are LLCs getting a recycling reimbursement? That's like, for one, I think it was like sixty thousand dollars. For another one, it was like thirty thousand dollars. And so I want to know where this recycling reimbursement money is coming from and why they're getting it? Because I've never seen that before. And why doesn't recreation have its own tents and chairs? Because they're spending thousands of dollars renting this stuff. If, I mean, y'all have the Department of Public Works, y'all can put all of that stuff in there in storage and they won't have to be renting this stuff. I don't understand why recreation wouldn't have their own stuff, that doesn't make sense to me. Okay, sixty-two thousand dollars towards the library, that should be at least a million. How many people are working for the Parking Authority? If the city can paint every sidewalk yellow, but if the police don't ticket the car, then people are going to continue to park there. I've been driving all around, I see yellow everywhere and I see cars parked there and I don't see no tickets. Can y'all, y'all can tell us about the flu events, the Halloween events and all of those events? Can y'all also, on the phone calls and the text messages, tell us about this, this meeting, the historical preservation meetings, the A B C Board meetings, the what is it, the budget meetings and also the planning and zoning board meetings? Still waiting on permit parking? And what is the status? Ran out of time. Damn.
So Ms. Samuel, we receive those questions via a text. Someone just said, hey, we saw this on social media and we got all those questions. So I just would like to ask you, like, could you please send them to the administration so we can get the answers for you prior or even after you post it on social media? So we can have those answers for you. I think the B A has already started working on most of those questions. But we did receive them via text. So we did turn them over to the administration and we just asked that, excuse me? Bless you. We just asked that you send them to us. Alright, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Gloria Stewart.
Gloria Stewart. I am a resident of Orange. I noted my address on the signings. Now, I, the previous speaker, I noted how he was treated and it disturbed me. So I'm sure you're going to give me the same message. So I'm going to say to you, if that's the case, I'd like it in writing. Why? And then if so, I think you should come together and do something about it because it's an element of safety when it comes to putting the number of my street. But I am at sixty-two Hampton Terrace. Most of the people in two point one square miles, Orange, know my name and my number. I just think that it is not safe what you're requiring. And to go on and to add, back in the day, as one of my coworkers used to say, Rudy Thomas worked with me to get parking permits and that was a concern. Not to put the address on the parking permit because God forbid someone could follow you home. So that was another reason and I just wanted to add to that. However, when I entered the chamber, chambers, I saw some nice pictures being taken and I'm just going to go with a good note. And I'm hoping that that will appear in your community paper. I have one where you have all the council people listed and the clerk listed in that paper. And it's something that you could probably use to share information with the community. And everybody might not use the computer and I'm one of those people. I'm a dinosaur. So then you work with me the way you can communicate with me. Other than that, I can try to hobble out here at your meetings to get my information. Then I want to add in that thing. I know the kind of government we have and I would think it not robbery for the mayor to come and attend one of the meetings. If this way he can hear in person the concerns of his constituents. Not wait until it's time to run for the office and then knock on the door. Not wait until it's time to run for the office and then knock on the doors. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but it's something to think about. He, it would be nice for him to come. I know he doesn't have to, but it would certainly be nice and show enough, another side of interest, being interested in what the constituents have to say. I did attend the Board of Ed meetings, I'm trying to get back to that. And I'm certainly hope that you and the school will get together and work as a team for the benefits of our children. Sometimes I get a little choppy with the things that I have listed. When it comes to the planning board, I've been coming to the meeting. I'm skeptical about them, always has been. I don't believe that they have our best interests at heart. When I ride through the community and I'm retired, now I have a little more time. All I see, a big building, not nothing, anything for us. Because when I remember, I reminisce when my husband and I first came to Newark. He said to me, he said, you see those society hill built? That's not gonna be for us. They're building and so Orange has become that. It's two point one square miles that we have. And every time I ride around, it's like a building on the sidewalk, if there's such a thing to put for people to walk. And I'm just giving you this as food for thought.
Yes, ma'am.
So that when you do things like that, you consider your constituents here. You know, what's in our best interest. You know, those buildings that they're building, it's not for me, not at all. So as I say, I, I, we used to say, you got five minutes, you put your, all your questions on the table and you will get an answer if you do it real quick. But I'm seeing now that we not gonna get that. So what I would say to you, and I know it might not matter. I try to come to all the meetings so I can get it in person, you know? But, you know, be thoughtful of us, your constituents, and let's try to keep a good rapport with all of us. I love that you're back in the building. I do. So you know, I can see your smiling faces, share the concerns with all of you and hope that you would look out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
If it's the Lord's will, I'll come back the next week.
All right, see you then, Ms. Stewart. Jason Grove?
Good evening, everyone, members of the council. My name is Jason Grove, I live at six oh four Seven Oaks Road. Here with my son Mason, I could put him on the record too. You know, when I moved to the city of Orange five years ago, I made a commitment to get involved in the community. But you see what I've been doing, so I haven't had a lot of time to come out. So I'll go through my comments and get through it. So hello, everybody.
Hello.
So greetings to the members of council. I like to address an ongoing issue between Lincoln Avenue and Berkeley Avenue. The increasing number of cars in the area has become a concern for the community. Not only has it affected the aesthetic of the neighborhood, but it also appears that the number of vehicles continues to grow, pushing closer and closer along both streets. I am particularly concerned about the limited spaces available and the growing demand. This issue is often an indicator of households owning more than one vehicle or even vehicles. I also believe the recent residential development in the area may be contributing to the problem. Can the council provide an update on any plans from the Parking Authority to mitigate this situation? The community is in need of solutions to address the imbalance between parking and the demand for space and availability. In addition, I have a few questions for the council, to which I've already submitted to the clerk, so if you check your email, I said it already. What specific measures are being considered by the city to address the increasing parking demand between Lincoln Avenue and Berkeley Avenue? Has the city conducted any recent studies or assessments regarding the capacity and usage of parking spaces in the area? If so, can those findings be shared with the public? Are there any plans to expand parking capacity and introduce alternative parking solutions such as residential parking permits or additional off-street parking? I know some of these things have been discussed, but I'm a little out of the loop, so. Has the city considered working with developers or community members to create long-term parking strategies as more housing and cars enter the neighborhood? What timeline can the residents expect for parking, for the Parking Authority to implement any new strategies or regulations to address these concerns? Also regarding the residential development that I believe has contributed to the parking issue? May I have a copy of any traffic study or any research that is, that was done to approve the parking by the planning board? Along with any discussions that took place along the approval process? That was quick, I didn't expect to have too much time. But, you know, thank you so much for hearing me. This is my son Mason's first time at a council meeting, right?
Right.
So hopefully he'll be back here with me. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. Gloria Bozeman?
Gloria Bozeman, three four five Albott Street. I, I, I've been coming here to the microphone for several times and I appreciate the opportunity to pose a question. But I also anticipate at some point there will be an answer. And I also anticipate that as I begin to ask these questions, that if they can't be answered at this meeting, you say that they will be answered during the meeting or if not at this meeting at some point in time. So far, they have not been answered. I continue and will continue to ask about the development that's going on in our community that leaves us no open spaces. Not only do they not leave us open spaces, much of what the planning board, whoever the members are on the planning board, much of what the planning board has recommended are apartments that we as a community, as a collective community, cannot afford. I talked about moderate income eligibility in these housings. Got no response back to that. Sorry if I'm keeping anybody awake here. I also have talked about the fact that if you don't have open spaces, you all, some of you are old enough to remember that high rises came down because open spaces were necessitated in places where there were aggregate or a large number of people assembled because it then related to crime. It related to pollution, it related to overcrowding, all of which do not have a positive impact on our quality of life and our quality of living. I'm still trying to hear the benefit of all of this development. And I'm gonna take a line out of Fatal Attraction, I'm gonna keep asking it because I will not be ignored. Now, when we begin to talk about the renewal and the impact, I'm expecting to see data, not generic conversations about it's going to be good for our community. Those of you who are on the planning board, tell us how it's gonna be good for our community. I heard that we're still asking for robo-calls with regard to these meetings. I've signed up for the list, not getting any information about when the meetings are occurring. I talked about the library and the inside of the library and its deterioration. Still waiting to hear a response about how that's going to be addressed. Still waiting to hear about programming that will address our adolescents who are not particularly involved in sports or the musical theater production, which I, I tell people, that's what you need to get your child in because they're gonna be rehearsing from October to May. So they will take up that most dangerous time in our community, which is between three and six P M. And so we want to be able to address those things. I want to be able to talk about how that older, I'm an older citizens' calendar is visible to me when I go on the website. I'd like to hear about the free Uber rides that other communities are offering to their seniors. Morris County, Mama's County, Summit, Bloomfield, I'd like to hear more about that. I'd like to hear more about what it is. I'd like to hear more from council members. While I certainly respect the business administrator, he is an appointed person. You are elected officials and elected officials have some accountability to their electorate. And so while I respect the fact that you may not be able to answer all of my questions at this point, at some point, some of these questions need to be answered. They need, we deserve that at a minimum, that they need to be answered. And so I say to you, I'll write mine down too and mail them in, but I expect a response. If not, then we have no choice but to go to the court of public opinion. We don't have an opportunity to hear back from you, anything that increases our confidence. And I like many of you personally. I like you. But personality is not performance and it's not accountability. And I think we deserve at a minimum that. And I say this to people all the time as I take my seat. You may not like the tone of the way in which I address things, but it doesn't make it any less true.
Darnell Gibbs?
Darnell Gibbs, Orange, New Jersey.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
You have to give your address.
Fifty West Market, Newark, New Jersey, zip code zero seven zero five two.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm gonna talk about two different things. The business administrator talked about the company that started the next company to help to finance the big company, yada, yada, yada. Cool, no problem. He also stated that the benefit to the town would be a million dollars, correct, sir? Over a million dollars. All right, so let's say one point one million, all right? From the paperwork, it states that the land was purchased at six point five million. Can we agree to that? If we do one percent over twenty-three years, that's five million dollars. But we know the tax rate is greater than one percent because I pay more than one percent for my house, all right? So that's one thing. Then on top of that, I talked about a lot of time and complete paperwork. Page twelve, cost estimates for each unit type, not applicable. Okay, maybe not. Page fourteen, project financing plan. Don't even know how it's being financed. Page fifteen, private financing commitments. Don't even know who's helping them. Page sixteen, explanation of need for the tax abatement. They gave a small one at the very beginning, didn't really mean much. Page seventeen, project schedule. Usually you get like an estimated, hey, this part of the phase is gonna take X amount of time. This part of the phase is gonna take X amount of time. This part of the phase is gonna take X amount of time. The rig, the thing that really bothers me the most is we don't even know how you're paying for it. And the reason I bring that up is because the halo rise downtown Newark, their project stalled due to funding. So they can't even complete the project that they started out to build. That was a ninety million dollar project. This project here is a hundred and six million dollars. But I know all of you collectively have a hundred and six million dollars. The second thing that I want to talk about, right? We talked about all these homes on the scattered list. Business administrator, I like you. You brought up the shortlist in reference to what houses was included. And sir, you said you actually took the time to go look at these properties. So did I. Out of fifty-two, I only had time to look at thirty-five. I apologize. I got a family, also running a business, I'm also employed, just like many of you. But I took the time to go look. I'm gonna run down a list. I got two minutes. I think I can knock it out. Four forty-three Byrne Street, occupied. Talked to the owner. Four ninety, empty parking lot. That's Byrne Street. Three six, three fifty-six Washington Street, empty parking lot. Eighty Street I can't get to. Three sixteen, Elizabeth Street, empty. Two eighty-four, Cleveland, empty. Two eighty-nine, North Day Street, multiple tenants, talked to them. Two ninety-nine, North Day Street, empty. Two seventy-eight, North Day Street, empty. Two fifty-nine, North Sinister Street, actually been recently renovated. And it's for sale. Okay. Two twenty-nine, North Sinister Street, what do you know? It was recently renovated. It was also for sale. Two oh three, North Sinister Street, what do you know? It's also been renovated, also for sale. Two thirty-two, High Street, they didn't even know, they didn't even know their house was on the list. Two ninety-one, two, three ninety-one, Lakeside Avenue, good. It's actually a food company. Did any of you know that? But it's on the list. They got employees. Four thirty-four, four thirty-seven, Lakeside Avenue, it's good. Two fifty-one, High Street, empty parking lot. Two thirty-six, Mount Vernon Avenue, couldn't find, so I skipped it. Four thirty-four, Parkinson Street, couldn't find that neither, so I skipped it. Four seventy-seven, White Street, it's abandoned. Two twenty-nine, White Street, good standing, two family, talked to the family, lived on the second floor. One fifty-one, North Day Street and one forty-nine, North Day Street. It's actually, it's almost like a two-family house that combined side by side, left and right unit, that was recently renovated. Eleven, one eleven, North Day Street, one zero nine, North Day Street, one zero seven, North Day Street, those are abandoned lots. Fifty Hillier Street, abandoned lot. Ninety-eight War Street, good standing. Forty-seven Hillier, empty. One thirty-four Park Street, empty. One ninety-eight Wallace, empty. Two twenty-nine, New Street, abandoned. Two fifty Snyder Street.
Mr. Gibbs?
My son. But you get my point. Also went around and took pictures as well.
Call up the next person. Ms. Pleasance, is it Rhett? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Pleasant Sfret. I'm the owner of one five seven War Street. And I wanted to take a moment to share why I made the decision to move out of Orange. While it's a place with a lot of orphan, it's growing and expanding beautifully. The challenges that I faced with the lack of parking and the ongoing rodent issue ultimately led me to look for a new place to call home. The struggle to find adequate parking on a daily basis, combined with the presence of rodents in the community, made it difficult to feel comfortable and at ease. I know that the city of Orange is aware of the rodent issue and I've reached out to the health department to better understand what steps are being taken to address it. I spoke with Mr. Di Filippo last week and he informed me that the use of poison to control the rodent population is not an option due to the potential risks it poses to other animals in the area. While I appreciate the care taken to avoid harming other wildlife, I'm left wondering what are additional measures that can be implemented to effectively tackle this issue? Additionally, can we please take a moment to address the proper containment and disposal of trash in the community? I'm aware that a notice was sent out months ago requiring residents to use trash cans and lids. Is that in fact being enforced? If not, how can we ensure that this requirement is being enforced? I believe that this would significantly improve the cleanliness and the health of the neighborhood. And not to zero in on the rodent issue, not only has the rodent issue we have in my life, it's posed a serious health and poses a serious health issue, my tenant is now complaining about the presence in and around the home of the rodents. I believe that it's crucial for the city to explore other solutions that can help mitigate the rodent problem, whether through preventative measures, community education or innovative pest control methods that are both effective and environmentally safe. I'm hopeful that the city will continue to work towards a resolution that benefits all residents and ensures a healthier, cleaner environment for everyone. Thank you for listening and I look forward to seeing how the city of Orange addresses these concerns to make it a better place for all to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhett. Nina, I don't think I'm gonna announce the last name. Would you pronounce your last name for me, so I? Adabajo. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Nina Adabajo, four, oops, pardon me, four thirty-three Lincoln Avenue. So this is my first city council meeting. So I'm really not, you know, sure what in, you know, what to do or what to say. But I was advised by someone to come here because I moved to Orange in January of this year from West Orange, where I was born and raised. I am thirty-five years old and I am a stage four breast cancer. I don't wanna say patient, but you know, I was that, yeah, survivor, thank you. Or thriver because I'm still in treatment. With that being said, upon moving, I applied for a handicap parking spot because as per Social Security Administration, I am permanently disabled. My cancer spread to my bones, so I have a hard time walking sometimes, you know, regardless. But because I was denied after, I'm gonna say, four or five months because in my, in my building, where I own a condo, another tenant has a handicap spot. So I was denied by engineer and I have the letter, but you know, you guys probably know how it works. And I just don't think that's fair because I can't help that, you know, I'm going through what I'm going through and I also can't help that, you know, there may be other disabled people in my building. So I even appealed and, or I don't even know if it's called. Um, so I even, uh, appealed and, or I don't even know if it's called the appeal. I even asked if, because my building sits on the corner of Lincoln and Mountain View, if, and I usually go through the back entrance, if, um, the handicap parking spot could be placed on Mountain View, which is actually would be better for me. I was told that no, because my address isn't Mountain View, it's Lincoln. So, um, I don't know really what other steps to take. Um, I just, at this point, like sometimes I live alone, it's just me. Um, when I come from treatment, every, which I go every Friday faithfully for the past twenty months, my bones hurt. I can hardly, you know, so me finding a spot on Fairview, so to speak, or even on Scotland Road and walking up the hill, you know, it's just, I just don't think that's right. Um, so that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Alright, thank you ma'am.
No problem.
Council president.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yes, um, I would like to actually reach out to this resident and, um, and you. And let's have a conversation with the business administrator on what can be done, on how we can advocate for her.
Department too, so we can, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Ms., I was gonna mess it up. Ms. Nina. Can I, um, can, I'm gonna run out and get your phone number, so we can get your phone number and give you a call. Alright, thank you ma'am. Tyrone Tarver.
Uh, Tyrone Tarver, two fifty-eight Ogden Street in Orange. Uh, first, I have copies of some, uh, documents that I submitted to the clerk's office. I don't know if you want to distribute it to the council members now, um, but they are on record. What I give them to?
You sent them to the clerk's office, right?
Yeah.
We have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, um.
Your address.
I mentioned it, two fifty-eight Ogden Street.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, just briefly, I want to back up, uh, Dr. Bozeman, uh, on a lot of stuff she said, but, um, I guess I'll provide just to claim I am a board member, so everything I say tonight is not representative of, of the school board or the district. But, um, yeah, everything she said is, is absolutely an issue, but just as far as being an official, um, when we have meetings, the board members are supposed to be fully aware of all the details. That's the only way we can vote yes or no on an item. We just can't get a syn- synopsis. And they say, oh, it sounds good, okay, and then, then provide votes. Uh, the same should be of the council. If questions come in front of the council, all, all of the council members should be well apprised of all of the details of anything they cast a vote on, yes, no, or abstain. So directing, uh, community questions to di- different departments, I don't think that's adequate. If you, if you vote yes or you vote no, you should know the details. And you should be able to provide them to the public in these meetings, because that's what you're elected here to do, alright? Um, my main topic, uh, I mentioned at my last meeting, uh, I, I am the treasurer for the, uh, recall committee to recall, uh, Jamie Summers Johnson from the out, from the office of, uh, South Ward Councilperson. I submitted this petition on September twenty-seventh. Uh, by law, uh, I'm supposed to get a response that the commission, that the petition was compliant or not compliant within three business days. Uh, I haven't received the response yet. Um, in light of that, on the original petition, we, we, we had a misspelling of the councilwoman's first name. So we resubmitted an amendment to the petition, um, a week later. And three days have long since gone and passed, we haven't received a response from the city clerk's office. Um, we've had no choice but to, um, secure legal representation, alright? Um, the statute isn't being followed as far as the response of three days and also our civil rights, according to our attorney, are, are being violated by, by not receiving a response. Um, we submitted the, our attorney submitted the, uh, the official letter this past Friday. Uh, we had hoped for a response by, uh, today before the meeting started. Uh, we still haven't received a response, okay? Like I said, it's well past, uh, the statutory three-day res- response limit. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit annoying, um, we're being disenfranchised. Um, I don't like the city, I don't like that the city clerk's office has not responded to us. When I first brought this up, uh, after our first submission, um, I did speak with the clerk and she said, uh, that, uh, the, the, the attorney, uh, hadn't gotten back to her yet. But, um, if the attorney is not allowing the clerk's office to, uh, abide by the, the New Jersey statutes, then hire another attorney. Um, it's only one billable hour to, uh, review a petition and say whether it's compliant or not compliant. And compliant only means that whether the font size is the same, whether title of the petition is the same, whether the format of the petition of, is the same, it is not the same, is, uh, is, is standard and statutory. Um, it, it doesn't, compliance does not mean it has to comply with any, uh, wi- with the content of the petition. So a- again, uh, we're three weeks now and we still haven't received an official response from the clerk's office. So I, I don't like that the response has not been given to us. I don't like that we have to hire an attorney and probably go the legal route now. We have to pay out of our own pockets to address the situation from the clerk's office while the clerk's office gets to use our tax money to defend us in court. You know, it's, it's not right. Like I said, it's, it's a res- we just need a simple response so we can move forward with our statutory right to move forward with this petition. Um, if the clerk's office or the business administrator can address this now, fine. If not, send our attorney a letter. Other than that, we're gonna have to go the legal route. Thank you.
That's it. That's it. Motion to close citizen comments? Yes. Nori Gibbs.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Uh, Nori Gibbs, four thirty-four Lincoln Avenue. I do have a question, a couple meetings ago, I believe the other attorney that was sitting there, forgot his name, uh, stated that Orange was developing a method for residents to have their information redacted from public access. Uh, so I wanted to know if that was in progress or it's done. Can we get a paper to fill out to say remove our address from public meetings?
So you, you're speaking regarding to Daniel's law, right?
Correct. That was question, and there was a little back and forth and he said.
Ms. Rahim.
And he said he would work on a, a method to, that we can fill out the form to have that.
Did you speak to him? Did you ever speak to him?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to follow up on that. Um, second, I was actually hoping to see a cannabis ordinance on here. It's October, it was mentioned a few meetings ago that it would be in October, uh, but it's not here. So I was curious, um, on that. Or honestly, any ordinance that supports additional revenue to the city outside of these buildings that are, for me, taking away from the quality of life at this point. Uh, we talked about the library a great sum and how it's beautiful outside because of the little washing that it got. But the inside, it still needs some upgrades. But we have all these developers coming in. We have a right to say, hey, if we say yes, can we get this? So why are we not putting the library at the forefront? You're putting a building in our city, the kids are gonna be living there, they're gonna be using the library. Like a million dollars in community something, there's nothing. Absolutely nothing. It takes away. It's exhausting as a resident to be here for fifteen years and it just, it doesn't get better. And the taxes are increased, the salaries go up, the buildings come in, the parking is trash. I'd, and I'm, I'm, I'm just hopeful that something on here will excite me one day. And it's not, so if I may ask, the planning board at this point, because I think all of those happen in the planning board and then come to the council for a vote. Um, which by the way, you don't have to agree to, like, it's, it's okay to say no. Even though the planning board is going through their ordinances, that actually needs to be upgraded. Um, it's okay for the council to say no, if it doesn't sit well with you, and it shouldn't, because what really is the benefit? Again, my husband pointed out the back and forth with the BSD and LLC and this address and that address. It definitely sound like it was a planned statement and it should have been information giving in the beginning, so no one would question it. There should be no questions when these things are in the ordinance, in the ordinance. It should be very clear as to what the intention is, where the finances are coming from, who are the owners of these LLC, what the benefit is to the community. I have not seen that yet. And we talk about the library so much. Why isn't library being upgraded? That's the benefit to the community. Why can't that be passed on to the builders that are coming in? Yeah, that's, that's just, that's one item, check. We talk about the roads and the traffic and the parking. That's also a benefit to the community. If it's spelled out, hey, you're getting a twenty-three-year tax abatement. However, we need this done, we need this done, we need this done. One hand washes the other. It's, it's a partnership. But I feel like we keep giving and giving and giving and giving, and when I say we, we keep giving. And I, I, at this, we, we need something in return that's actually beneficial. So looking forward to that ordinance. And, um, I'm sure, again, if it's spelled out the right way, that shows the benefit to the community, I'm sure we can all get behind it. It's not about the buildings, it's really the benefit. If you show us that a four-hundred-unit building on Main Street will benefit this community, no one would question it. No one. So, a lot of gray areas. Uh, it, it's, for me, transparency is, it's, it's important. And we're not trying to be Debbie Downers, we're just looking for clarity. That's all.
Welcome. See the attorney, Montalish, wants to speak to cannabis.
So, uh, council president, with respect to, again, I, I obviously wasn't privy to any conversation that occurred a few weeks ago with my deputy uh, any member of the public, I will certainly follow up and I can definitely say with respect to Daniel's law. Um, first of all, uh, um, there are two criterias that obviously need to be met. An individual would have to be in the protected class, which would involve either law enforcement, um, former prosecutor, present prosecutor, um, to judge, uh, members of those, to protect, members of the family of those protected class individuals. So to the extent that there's an individual that's sin- within that protected class, that would be the first criteria. The second criteria would be an internet post. Um, Daniel's law protects the posting of the addresses for those, for those members in the protected class. So to the extent that those, the, those criteria do not exist, then they won't, then Daniel's law will not apply. So to the extent that anybody wants to apply Daniel's law, try to apply Daniel's law with respect to putting an address out on a council meeting, that's not gonna work. Um, we could certainly take measures and will take measures again to protect the information for those who fall under Daniel's law. I will have a conversation with my deputy to the extent that any, um.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
No problem. I will follow up with my deputy, um, to get some clarity with respect to any conversation that was had. And anything that we are working on, we will certainly make that available to the council.
There was also a question asked about, um, why the cannabis ordinance is not.
I apologize, I must have stepped out and I missed that question. I apologize. Um, what was the sp- specific question? I'm sorry.
We were to have it up for this meeting, but.
Yes, so, um, the proposed or, the proposed cannabis ordinance, we anticipate should be ready, um, for presentation or presentment in the first, hopefully the first meeting of December. It actually is being revised. Um, there are certain, uh, other, um, uh, language, uh, that we need to make sure, um, is in the draft that corresponds to regulates, state regulations before we can actually submit it to the governing body for review and to the public for, um, consideration and for vote. So that is in fact being worked on. Again, we anticipate that it will be ready for public viewing. Um, the, we're, we're shooting for the first meeting in December.
Thank you. Councilwoman Easton or Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes, I was just going to, um, ask attorney Montalish, just to clarify. Um, so we are still determining what is, what, what is and what is not acceptable from a resident regarding the Daniel's law.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry. It's already been determined. Uh, I, I didn't understand there, I'm sorry, said it?
Yeah, that's, I was a little confused. So someone, um, with their active or retired law enforcement or military, um, they still have to recite their address when they, when they step to the podium.
Well, this is not correct. This is not an internet, at least this doesn't fit under the definition of a quote-unquote internet post. So Daniel's law is only protecting internet postings. This is not an internet posting. To the extent, to the extent that addresses will be pub-
Excuse me, can we, like, please, can we stop?
Now, we will do everything and anything to safeguard those protect, the, the addresses and contact information of those in, within the protected class, um, uh, s- under the specific definitions of what Daniel's law protects.
Okay, so nowhere in the statutes doesn't say anything how it protects if it's being broadcast, because I know this is public. There's not a way that we could go back in and edit and kind of muffle out what they're saying or mute out what they're saying on record. So I still feel like that's just defeating the whole purpose of the Daniel's law. If we allow the person, if we demand the person or require the person to give their information, whoever's watching this meeting or whoever's gonna review this meeting on a YouTube channel that we do have, they're gonna be able to get this person's address.
Okay.
So I was just putting that out there because I was just trying to understand, um, where the law department stands and if you guys will advocate or you see any reason to take it a step further.
The law department stands under what the law says. That's where we stand.
Thank you, just to clarify, thank you.
Can I have a motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close what?
Second, Easton. Motion to close citizen comments by councilwoman Barrow, second by councilmember Easton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments? Councilman Colley.
Oh, um, let me re- real brief. Um, as we move closer to this November election, I believe vo- the voter registration, um, deadline is, is fast approaching for those who need. Tonight, fast, tonight. Um, if you haven't now registered to vote, um, then, um, this, this is it. And, uh, Mr. BA, have we received any, um, communication, um, from the Board of Education for any type of, um, um, I guess, uh, agreements or, or work that they want us to partner with them?
On the stadium?
Any, yeah, stadium or, or, or any.
There have been discussions with respect to the stadium. That's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, alright. And that's still like an ongoing, uh, back and forth discussion?
We're due for a meeting.
Okay, alright, alright. And Mr. BA, can you, um, I asked this question, uh, before, but can you explain on a record why, um, uh, why, why we don't, uh, do phone blasts, um, for, um, uh, meetings? More specifically coun- council meetings?
There's a specific statutory notice provision that the council follows. And to step outside that notice provision invites next, we want X and then we want Y. And because there's a cost associated with all of that and all of the minutes, all of the meeting dates are published on the website, on the calendar, a year in advance.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um. And I believe it was our last meeting, um. Uh, one of our taxi, um. Uh, drivers came in with an issue, did you have an opportunity to, um. Uh, look into that, or that's still ongoing?
That's ongoing, we haven't had a chance to have the meeting, the councilwoman and I. Um, but I have reached out to the taxi owners.
Okay, okay. And the, um, parking at two ten. Central Avenue, I seen, uh, a, an email with some type of, um, potential, um. A resolution with that.
So. We had originally, uh. Several months ago, reached out to the owners of the Save-A-Lot parking lot. We've had discussions back and forth with them, and they. Um, have recently agreed to make overnight parking available in that lot for a fee. We're in discussions with the county regarding. Central Avenue and the parking ordinance that we had originally adopted, we had a conference call that you were on. Um, and we're waiting for the county to get back to us.
Alright, alright, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Easton?
I have one question. My business ministry, and I wish. And I have one for you, can we bring our, bring back our health officer to give us an update? Because that is going into the winter months. On the health issues like how we've been doing in matters for discussion?
Yes, but we'll do, you wanna have a conversation?
Okay. Um, and. The garbage cans, each person has to have a closed garbage cans. How can we? Keep the garbage coming from breaking the tops?
All they have to do is, is.
I watched the other day, I bought two new ones, neither one of them has a top, one has a half, one, the other top is completely off. I watched the other day. With the, a residence garbage can, they were putting it, and the top was off. So, they're buying the garbage cans. For some reason, the garbage company is tearing the tops off.
All they have to do, if that happens, is, because we put in the garbage contract, that if they break the lids, run them over. They have to replace them.
I don't think the residents know that, so we probably need to.
So all they have to do is call Mr. Mays's office, it goes on a list, and we notify the garbage company to do the replacement.
Right, so. If they break your garbage can, you can call. Public Works Director, and the garbage can will be replaced. That's good to know.
Correct.
Because, and then also, I think we need to train the. Man or to talk to the driver of the truck for the, cuz he's just the same driver, and sometimes I, I pull up and say different things and. And maybe he can let his workers know that they cannot. Tear the tops off the garbage can. They have to handle them with care, understanding that they're moving real fast, they're picking them and throwing them back, blah, 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 blah. But one other comment I wanted to make, and that was about the library. Now, the library outside was done at no cost to the city or to the taxpayers. But it seems. Everything starts. Has a beginning and an end, but it takes time. So we did one phase, which was the library, and I'm just tired of people, when we do do something, they come and make little of it. That was a great accomplishment, cuz it would have cost us a lot of money to get that library, and it does look nice. Now, we're working on the railings, to try to get some new railings in the front. But we were trying to get somebody to fund it, one of our vendors. And I don't know why. Residents keep saying that the council doesn't do this, do that. We are out trying to get things done without having to raise taxes and pay money for it. And we do talk to our developers about that, and I'm pleased, I gave you guys respect, I expect the same thing from you. So you can make comments when you walk out the door, that's fine. I don't talk when you're talking, so let's be respectful. Um. But. In the years that I've been in Orange, the library has been talked about, downgraded. But not one residence has come forward with any ideas as to how we can improve the library, no suggestions. It doesn't hurt anyone, a resident can do a fundraising for the library, do make the money. We had the friends of the library, that was destroyed. So, when you come up here and you complain about the library. Right now, we're working on the interior, we're finding some great things inside that's been covered up that we uncovered. But all of that takes time. So if you have some time on your hands. And if you stop. Being so negative about everything, put some positive energy and come out there and help. I mean, we could, we could ask the residents to donate a hundred dollars each person to the library. That's a fundraiser, ten dollars, a dollar, whatever you have. But, everything can't come all at once.
Just excuse me, Councilwoman Easton.
We just don't have the money.
Officer. Like, this has to stop. We're quiet whenever you're up here speaking, we are quiet and we are listening to you. I've heard so many negative comments. Laughing. Just being rude. And we're all adults here, and you may not like what's being said, but we listen to it. I may not like what's being said, but I listen to it, I'm not laughing, I'm not making side comments, like, come on. So please. Can you just allow people to speak, and can we just have some form of respect? Until the end of this meeting, I see you shaking your heads, I see you laughing, that's fine. But we're adults. And we're all black and brown people, and we need to respect one another. And this meeting has been horrible. Cuz we don't respect one another. So can we just please? Have some respect for people as they're talking, like we respected you. Sorry, Councilwoman Easton.
Thank you, thank you for that. Because I know myself, I work hard in my ward, I don't know about anybody, it's a lot of people make comments about things that they don't even live on the street or in that ward. So they have no point of reference. And I just wanna say, I got my street paved at no cost to the taxpayers. Cleveland Street has been paved. Brand new school, brand new street. So, we are working behind the scenes, you may not see it, but we do work. For the benefits of the residents, and the very people. That come over here and make negative comments and always belittling it, they're the very people that don't do anything. So, if you want the city to continue or want to build on it, try and be a little positive sometime and work, work together. Yes, we are elected official, and I learn every dime that I get as an elected official. Twenty-four seven, I'm on the job. You call my number, I call you back. I'll even come into your house. So, talk what you know, and make a reference to the things that you know that you relate to, but don't put everybody in the same bucket. And talk about everybody else. Because I could ask some questions from some of you that you couldn't even answer. And we do read. I go through my packets thoroughly, and I can answer most of the questions. But we have a business administrator who we pay a lot of money to do that. So that we're all on the same page, and we're collaborative in our answers. And I'm not telling you one thing, and somebody's just telling you something, so we come together, he answers the questions, and we challenge him, we, we. Think he's not giving the right answer, that's our right to do that. But this is a democracy, you have your opinion, I have mine, that's why it's a democracy. Thank you, council.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Gilbert? Councilwoman?
Bear with me, my throat is hurting, um, so, good evening, everyone.
Come back, do you, want me to come back?
No, it's okay, I'll, we'll run through it, cuz I know everybody wants to get home. So, um, first and foremost, thank you to everybody who has come to the podium to, um. To ask questions and share their opinions, um, I do agree that we do. We should be moving forward with a different mindset to collaborate and to, uh, work with each other, but that, that takes. That takes input, and that takes action on both ends. Um, so I'll leave it at that, I will start by saying my thank yous, um, for a couple of things that's been going on. Um, I forgot at the last meeting to mention that I visit. The Safe Haven that's over on Central Avenue. Uh, Central Avenue Playground, they have at the fieldhouse there, Safe Haven for some of the youth after school. Um, the couple of students were there, definitely recreation was in the building, and a couple of new, um. Recreation employees were in the house as well, and, um, it was a great event to see some of the students out there. Um, getting awards for some of the sports and activities that they've been doing. Um, there is room for improvement, but I will tell you, we have some very dedicated, um, employees who are. Uh, brainstorming on what other programs we could bring to the city. Um, I'll also say thank you to the, um. Department of Public Works, uh, Director Mays, Supervisor, is Supervisor, right, Ray Field Morton, uh, not Morton. Don't tell him I did that.
He's watching you, bro. He's gonna be outside.
No, 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 Ray, please forgive me. Um, no, I do wanna say thank you, uh, to these gentlemen and their team that they sent out this past Saturday, we had our West Ward cleanup day. Um, it was phenomenal, we had students, we had residents. Um, so I was very appreciative for the planning that went into that day and the outcome, and it was a beautiful day on Saturday. Um, in Lincoln Avenue School, their cheerleading and basketball team, they actually had a car wash as well, so. That Saturday felt like real community, I saw people come to volunteer. Uh, we cleaned up some of the West Ward, we, we trickled over into a little East Ward too, so Carrie, you could thank me later. And we just went out and we just did things, and then we also showed up for the students as well at Lincoln Ave, so, um. I wanna say thank you to those gentlemen who are always out on the streets, um, in every, every type of climate. Um, trying to do their very best, um, in the city of Orange. I also wanna say. That on the agenda tonight, I did, um, ask the council to recognize two women that I know in the city of Orange. Um, Ms. Maria Calon and Ms. Jenna Mateo. Uh, these are two phenomenal women that I know, and I wanted to recognize them for Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, for the businesses that they have opened in this community, for the families they have supported and uplifted throughout the years. And also for the boards and, and committees that they have chaired. In order to bring about real positive progress for our community. So I asked the council to vote yes, and recognizing these two women. And that we will continue to support the Hispanic and Latino community here in our city. I also wanted to switch over to. Some events that we have going on for the West Ward, um, we will be having. We will be having our self-defense class come back for domestic violence awareness. And we will be having an ongoing schedule moving forward, so if anyone's interested in registering, please let me know. The flyers will be available to the clerk's office at the end of the week, so that we can distribute. And put on social media and the city's website. Um, also, I do believe that there is a meeting for Orange Memorial. I believe there's a meeting tomorrow, but I would have to ask the business administrator to clarify. Right, okay, so it's a planning board meeting tomorrow, uh, they will be talking about plans on what's supposed to. On what their proposal is for Orange Memorial Hospital site, so if anyone is interested, I would, um, suggest. You show up for that. Um, just like you're showing up for these meetings, it's beautiful to see how much you care for your city. I was, I would recommend showing up for that meeting as well. Um. Also. I'm gonna switch over to questions, cuz, oh, I'm running out of time, alright, real quick, so Metcalfe Park, business administrator, um. It's been complaints that has been locked in the morning, and it hasn't been unlocked on time in order for the community to use it.
Okay, we'll address that.
Okay, is there any chance that we can, um. Like, deputize a resident that we could trust to open and unlock that?
No.
Okay, that was just an idea, I was throwing it out there. Um, also. Tree trimming, are we gonna be able to do any of that, because there's a couple of residents like on Taylor Street. And over on Conover and New England, who have been complaining about certain trees.
Are they on private property?
No, they're like right on the sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, they're city property.
Just give me the addresses.
I'm sorry, say one more time?
I said, we'll address it, just give me the addresses.
Okay, um, and, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. Public Works actually has an app now, where the residents could put in a work order for their, or put in their complaints, am I right?
Correct.
Could you just give the, the community the information on how to do that? So that, you know, they're not chasing out a city council member, or there, there's another way that they could reach out to Public Works to ask.
If you go onto the website, under the residence page, there's a work order form, you just fill it out and submit it.
Did everybody, I hope everybody can hear that, okay.
Correct.
Okay, and then, this is my closing, I swear, um, in closing, um, I just wanna say, regards to the scatter sites. I understand the reasoning for it, um, to look at how other ways we could plan on bringing some things. Um, to our community, or just beautify our community. But when it comes to the actual plans of this community, I feel like this city is already scattered. Um, for lack of a better word, where we actually need to have more input for the residents. And we really need to consider what we're doing, I really would like to see more commercial development. We have so many young and new business owners in this community that are not even able to open up shop here. Uh, we have a growing population of students and youth. My daughters, they wanna do things in this community, but where's the space for it? Um, so, those are the type of plans I would like to see moving forward, and when I look at some of these. Um, homes that were listed in the revised list of the scattered, um, site. I see that some of them have been abandoned for a very long time, and, um, I really just like to see. Us as a council, come together and really talk about an ordinance for blight. And be more aggressive with that, because there should be no reason why stuff should be vacant and abandoned for more than ten years. That's ten years of revenue loss, ten years that a family was not able to move in to that property. Um, and I would like to just see more aggressive action. Um, and, just my position as a council person, I would like to see us leverage this new development that has been approved. To make some things happen in our community. I went to the library board meeting, and they had a, um, a production. A movie production from Netflix come in and propose to renovate part of our library. At no cost to us, these are opportunities, these are ideas that we need to see. Now, sometimes when you come to the meetings, you don't hear everything, um, and that's why it's, it's, it takes.
Councilwoman.
Yeah. I know. I know, I'm way past, I'm way past, but, um, I just wanna say, yes, uh, keep showing up for the meetings. Um, thank you to the, um, to the, um. DPW that helped me this past weekend, and like I said, my position is just standing on, um. Creating a better Orange, but I want us to be strategic about it. And I, like I said, I want us to leverage the development that is coming in, we can't just throw out a million dollars, who's spending the million dollars, where's it going to? People would donate to the library if we knew how the money was being spent. But right now, our library, our computers are not working in our computer room. So there's so many questions, but people wanna see action, so I would like to be a part of that action and be a part of that plan, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I wanna start off with. Park Avenue School. Uh, Mr. Peters and myself, he lives on Park Place, I live on Duane. They have a little area. Uh, where you can cut through from Park Place to Duane Street. They keep that open twenty-four seven. People park in there at night, I can hear them driving the cars through. That's why the garbage is being put in those garbage cans. Because it's available twenty-four seven, they never lock the gates, never. A- am I correct, Mr. Peters? They never lock the gates, ever. So people come, people actually, I can see it from my window, people park in there at night. So yes, it's probably garbage from other areas, it's not from the community, people from different areas. I come in at night, you see people cutting through. So, they need to lock that gate, number one, you can't get to the garbage can if the gate is locked. My backyard is adjacent to, right where they pass, pass through. Um. BA? Uh, what's the timeline for the, uh, for the rec center, where are we at with the rec center?
So, there are operative agreements, the redevelopment agreement, the financial agreement, and a contract of sale. Which are still being negotiated between the city and the selected developer. Um, I had anticipated that those negotiations and finalized documents would be done already, they're not. Um. We had a negotiating session. A week ago, today, um, that changed. Um, that changed the course of some of the issues. Um, so we're waiting on a new round of documents to be circulated between the parties.
See, I, I think that's a development we need to focus on. It's gonna help, uh, you know, our youth, our older adults, everyone in the city. So I'm looking forward to that. Also, what's the timeline for the creation of the parking authority? Cuz we approved that.
So the next step in the um, creation of the parking authority is the appointment of commissioners. You'll get a memo regarding the methodology for the appointment. And the city has started to solicit resumes from people who are interested in being commissioners. There should be an ad that goes up on the website this week, and there'll be an ad published in the local newspaper.
Fantastic. Also, I wanna let, maybe you wanna write this down for, for the youth or anyone that's interested on November sixth, right here in the council chambers. Um, I'm having an armed and unarmed officer with Sora job fair. I have a lot of uh companies here. Um, they're gonna be hiring individuals that are certified on the spot. And also, anybody in the city of Orange that wants to get their Sora license, they can get it for fifty dollars. Okay, for, for sixty candidates, free. You can get your Sora license. They will be here. I will be here on November sixth. So if you have youths or anyone over the age of eighteen that wanna get their cert, they wanna be a certified security officer, all you have to do is be here on November sixth. And we're gonna help get them their Sora license for fifty dollars. And if anybody knows, that's usually a service, you might have to pay four hundred dollars to get your Sora license. So it's, it's a great thing for our community. And you know what? That's about it. Thank you, everyone. And I listen to everyone closely, and I am paying attention, and we're gonna work harder for a better tomorrow in Orange, New Jersey. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanna start off saying that, and I'm gonna speak for all the council members here. And I wanna let you know that we all work hard, okay? We all live in this city, and we all want the same things that you want, okay? We want a better place for us to live, grow, and play, and raise our families. And, and, and I can vouch. We're in the communities, we're doing community meetings, you know, we're at the administration, we're talking to the BA constantly. I was in his office today, talking about parking. So, you know, don't kick our backs in, okay? We want what's best for everybody, okay? Like I said, we live here too, okay? Come to us with suggestions and ideas, and let's work, you know, together so we can make things happen. And on that note, I just wanna um have, I have a request for um, you council president and to you, Mr. BA, and I think Councilwoman Eastern, you touched upon this. Uh, but it's on my notes, for the health officer. I think he should be here, you know, and I would like to have him here at least at one of the meetings, what, at one of the meetings during the month. You know, we need to know the health of our city, okay? We have a lot of kids, you know, there's the flu going around, COVID, you know, a lot of diseases, okay? And, you know, I'm compromised somewhat, you know, I'm a senior citizen, you know, believe it or not. But I, I'd like to know what's going on in the community, you know, what diseases, what's out there, so could we please have the health officer come back to these meetings, at least once a month, if not both of the meetings? Also, I, I would like the library, somebody from the library to come here um, and talk to us. I, I ran into a representative from the library, and they talked to me like some good things are going on inside the library, inside and outside the library. So I think we all need to hear that. So I was hoping that, you know, you can invite somebody from the library to come to the next meeting and talk to us and let us know what's going on at that library. I also went up to Dunkin' Donuts today to get a cup of coffee. Why, why is that closed?
It's renovated.
Being renovated.
They're rebuilding it, all of them, yeah.
Right.
I said no.
No, yeah, I didn't. I was nothing surprised. And also, um, Councilwoman Eastern, we talked the last meeting about having the attorney from the planning board come to speak to us also, okay? Where are we with that?
Did we have that conversation?
Hello, pardon me?
Didn't we have that conversation?
I haven't had it yet with the Council Wes, uh, Wenzel.
We're still working on it.
Still working on it, okay? And a couple announcements. On Thursday, this Thursday coming, you can get your flu shot or COVID shot right here at City Hall from um ten to two P M. And this, this is what I like, the Orange Housing Authority is having a community on resource fair. Next Tuesday, the twenty-second, from ten A M to two P M. Um, it's gonna be a lot of vendors there for jobs, for housing, for uh medical screenings, e- education, um, opportunity, counseling services. Um, so please come out and um and, and support, um, but it's gonna be a lot of vendors there, so come on out. And um, the last thing I wanna say is today was the last day for um registration. We have twenty-one more days to the election, three weeks from today. Gotta get out, gotta get out. So please on, on November fifth, grab your neighbor, grab your friend, grab anybody, let's go, let's go vote. Um, one other thing before I forget, and this is the last day, uh, you was talking about the garbage trucks that break in the garbage cans. Um, Councilwoman, um, Jamie Summers Johnson just said that we, we got a truck right behind the garbage truck. What do they do?
They write summonses.
They write summons?
They write summonses.
Okay.
When they break somebody's garbage can?
Not only that, but they write summonses for non-compliant residents and businesses under the garbage ordinance.
Okay, and how are we doing with that? You know, folks that are not using the garbage can with a lid and just throwing their bags out there?
We started an enforcement blitz ward by ward this last through the last Monday or Tuesday. And we send, in addition to the truck that follows the truck, we're sending a code inspector plus two DPW employees into each ward to identify and to summons, write summonses both to commercial properties and residential properties and multifamily properties.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Just one last thing. Um, this is just a community um, uh, announcement. Um, I read this article, um, I think it was yesterday or maybe today. Um, I think it's Walgreens. Is planning on closing a lot of um, uh, locations um, around this area um, due to shoplifting and other things. So all, what I'm saying is, i- if, 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 if we know someone that um, you know, makes a habit out of um, you know, uh, taking um, you know, I, I guess, uh, you know, things out of these places without paying for them, uh, is, i- is they're gonna have um, uh, on, a huge impact um, on on, on a residence that go into these places um, and, and utilize them the right way. Um, they are gonna be closing these uh, facility, um, the, these locations due to shoplifting and and also um, uh, they are competing with online um, um, I, I guess pharmaceutical companies as well. So that's just something that we just need to keep in mind um, as a community that uh, uses uh, Walgreens.
You can pick it back on that real quick.
I'm sorry.
Walgreens and West Orange is closing November the fourteenth, that's a definite. Walgreens and West Orange Tory Corner is closing November fourteenth. And as you walk in there today, they are standing there telling you that. And I had a conversation with the manager yesterday or, yeah, Monday. And exactly what you said is what, why they're closing. The sad part is, they will not hire security, so the manager is saying that people walk into the store. Sometimes they take a whole shelf of things. They can't touch them, they can't stop them, and they can't ask to go through their bag to see what's in it. So the best they do is let them walk out the store with whatever they have. Because there's no recourse. And I was just looking at the news where the guy walked into the store and the, the clerk, the cashier, he was stealing. He decided to jump all over the counter, jump on top of him. He stabbed the cashier three or four times. So that's why they are not touching nobody. Walgreens refuses to give them security. So they're closing their stores, and it's gonna impact our communities more than anybody. Because we use it for prescriptions, it's convenient, we can walk up there, whatever, so these stores is having the same problem, so don't be surprised if they close us next. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hilbert.
Summers Johnson.
It's this whole side.
I'm sorry, we the misfits over here. Um, okay, so real quickly, um I forgot to say thank you to the county. Thank you to uh SS County and to our liaison, uh Reggie Blaisone. Uh, Department of Public Works, we didn't have any more recyclable bins. Our orders didn't come in yet. So the county did donate a few, so I did wanted to say thank you. I felt bad, so I was sorry. Um, but then I also wanted to go back to the concern um, that one of the residents had about the parking on Berkeley and Highland. And the business administrator and I were talking about it at the last meeting about regarding the parking on Lincoln and Highland, those additional spots. Um, business administrator Hart White, did you have any updates on that?
So we had a meeting, um today. I lost track of days, uh, with the developer. By the end of next week, we will start the lottery for the sixty-six spaces. We'll solicit um, for uh, people who are interested. The cost will be fifty dollars per month. All of the maintenance and um for the lot, um, including the paving, snow removal, lighting, will all be done by the developer. Um, and we should have those sixty-six spaces available by the end of the year.
Thank you so much, Council President, thank you.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson. J A M I E, right? Spell it right, okay. Um, so I just wanna say that um, I participated in the breast cancer walk uh, with Orange and East Orange. I walked for my mother-in-law who passed of breast cancer in twenty seventeen. It was awesome seeing both towns united, police, fire. Um, it's just a really good collaborative effort. Um, I just wanna say for the record that I am one hundred percent in support of cannabis. I know we keep twisting it, right? We keep getting it twisted. I don't know, the truth just keeps getting twisted. Jamie Summers Johnson is in full support of cannabis, and I've always been from the beginning. I went door to door getting signatures night and day for cannabis, so I am in full support. So once it comes up, I will be voting for that. Um, the old police station, I was over there the other day taking pictures. Um, that's what I do. I take pictures, I send them in because that helps um, get things done, you know? I'm trying to find more out, more about leans on properties and how that is properly done. Um, because I wanna make sure that when these properties are not upholding their end of the bargain, that they are being fined and that those fines are coming before the council, and that we are aware of how much these places are being fined. Um, everyone talks about recreation and things like that. I just wanna be very clear, I have kids, okay? I definitely um, would rather spend my money in the city of Orange. Um, I had to put my mother in the Uber last week to go to Montclair Y for water aerobics. Um, my kids play at the Union Boys and Girls Club. Like, I know that we need something like that here. Um, I'm thankful for the Orange traveling basketball team. It meets from six to eight at Lincoln Avenue School. Many times people mention, oh, my child's not athletic. From a teacher aspect, let me be very clear. Sports is more than throwing a ball into a hoop. It's what comes with it. It helps students with autism. It helps students that aren't, you know, eager to be leaders. It, it's, it's more than what people think it is. When we talk about academic programs, that's why we have a board. That's why we have a school board. We need to go to the meeting and we need to make sure, because they have a lot of the things that you guys want. It's just that sometimes people think if their child doesn't attend school in Orange, they can't participate, and they can. And we need to make that known, that they can still participate. Um, let me see. So, okay, there's a leaf pickup. It started today. It's through December fifteenth. Um, you need to call Public Works if there's any issues at nine seven three, nine five two, sixty seventy-seven. And for my neighbors, this week is paper, cuz they always wait to see what I'm gonna put out on Thursdays. Uh, this week is paper. We gotta do a better job with that recycling thing. It's very confusing, but that's another thing. All right, seven, okay, number seven, the tip line. I've utilized the tip line as a council person. Um, the tip line, someone actually picks up the phone, it's for non-emergencies, but it actually fights a lot of crimes. It's what is used when you see something that looks kinda out of place, but you don't wanna call the nine one one or the emergency. Um, that number is nine seven three, six six six, zero zero nine seven. Um, I don't even tell them I'm a council person. I just report what I see. And um, a lot of times I see changes. Sometimes there's people hanging out, doesn't look good, you know, does, they look like they might you know, even be um, on some sort of substance like laid out, you know? That you would call nine one one, but if it's something that looks out of the ordinary that you think will help um, the quality of life, utilize that tip line. And last but not least, we talked a lot about questions and wanting answers. One thing I'm not gonna do is answer a question incorrectly because I think some people want answers to questions, and then some people want applause, and there's a lot that goes into it. So when I have my South Ward meeting on October twenty-third in council chambers, I requested questions from various people from the community, and I have the answers to those questions. And what I'm gonna do, I've used questions that would benefit my ward, um, because if I say something about Main Street, someone say, I don't shop on Main Street, you know, quick to say that I shop on Main Street. But I tried to get questions and answers so that when I speak to you, I operated for those answers. So I'm not gonna tell you, we're doing your street tomorrow, then we don't do your street tomorrow, then I'm on Real Talk, Fake Talk, whatever, saying that I said I was gonna do your street. So I think you want answers, but I think it's best that you have the correct answers. And I think people have been fooled into believing that you must attend these council meetings to get answers. You actually have a right to Oprah for the answers that you are seeking. You also have the right to call your council person. You also have the right to email your council person. And then if you don't get a response, you have at large council people that will also serve you. We're, we need to empower our residents. I'm not really concerned with the negativity. I'm a teacher. I can take it. I mean, politics is not for the weak. Thank God I know who I serve. Um, but I will say, I think, I'm so thankful for the residents that do email me, that do call me, and that have been given into the herd behavior. Um, because we really want people, especially with this election coming up, we want people who really research and think for themselves. Because the last thing we need is for people to join up in a group, and we have someone in office that may have us back in slavery. So it's very important that we research and that the information that we give you in these meetings, you know, we have the BA answer, you don't want the BA answer. If I say the same thing the BA says, you're not gonna like the answer cuz it came from me. Sometimes we don't like who the answer comes from, but I think that we need to get more transparent, and like you said, if you know why or the benefits, um, one meeting, I think uh, Councilman Ross asked about the pilots. I asked about it as well. I will be um, discussing that, and I will be giving you a copy of the questions and the answers so that you can then go tell your neighbors, so we can all work together. In my meeting, um, my district leader, Victoria, um, Victoria Scott. Veronica, I said Victorian. I wrote it down, Veronica, I'm sorry. Ms. Scott, that's why I don't call everybody by their first name. Um, she'll be there with me, and she'll be talking about voting. That's another thing that I was trying to do, have my district leaders work alongside me. Um, because we're stronger together. Thank you so much, Council President. Sorry, Veronica. Um, I just wanna say again, thank you, everybody that comes out to these council meetings. We don't take it lightly. But as someone said that came up to the mic, it is a partnership, but it's a partnership um, between Um, between the both of us, it goes both ways. Um, we work hard, um, God knows, we work hard. We answer telephone calls, we are there when um, it's certain holidays. We do all of that. Um, if you don't give the questions to us during a council meeting, which they show up on the minutes, the following meeting. Or you don't send those questions about departments to the business administrator and why the business administrator? Because he's in charge of the day-to-day operation of the city, he is. So he is Marty's boss. He is. Um, those questions won't get answered. And then when the questions do get answered by social media, they're not necessarily the correct answers. But people will take those answers and run with those answers. So as all of my colleagues spoke to tonight, um, we need to um. Be partners, but you have to understand it goes both ways. And my mother always said, you can get more flies with honey than you can with vinegar. And when you step to that mic and you're telling us we're stupid, or we're inanimate, or we don't read, we're humans too. We did sign up for the job, we can take it, that's all right, but you just still need to know that we're human. And, and guess what? Some of you are not liked by some council members, because we are human, but we work for everybody. And you know what the greatest thing about being in America is? One of the greatest things, your right to vote. Is your right to vote. And you know what the greatest thing about that is? If you don't like the work that somebody is doing, guess what? You can vote them out, if you don't like it. That's one of the greatest thing about being in America. So I'm just saying to you, um, you, you tell us we're horrible, you tell us we're nasty. You tell us we're rude, but sometimes you say that's a good job, or sometimes you'll say I appreciate that. But I just want you to know that it needs to go um, both ways all of the time. We do have um, voter registration that ends tonight at twelve. So if you haven't registered to vote, you can fill out um, your registration form. You can drop it in the post office and if it's postmarked by twelve tonight, you will be able to vote and it's election coming up. So if you know of people who haven't voted, tell them to get those applications in the mail. There's also an app that you can go on where you can vote online and then you can turn right back around and check that app out. To make sure that you've already registered to vote. This election is gonna be um, one of the biggest elections that we've ever had. I know in my lifetime, I'm sixty-two years old. Um, I want my granddaughter to be able to have something in her life that I had. I want her to be able to control her body. I want her to, to, to have certain rights, and I believe it's important for us to vote. Um, I wanna say, I was uh, visiting a church last week or week before last in the East Ward. And the church was having problems, having problems because in the backyard of a property where our code enforcement people cannot go. They can't go on private property. Um, there was uh, two oil tanks that were sitting behind this property. Um, it was rodents behind this property. It was a couple of things behind, a bunch of bacon and abandoned cars. Behind this property, so the church allowed me to go in, take pictures, and I sent them to our task force. We do have a task force here. I think this person works like twenty-four hours a day. He is out there trying to make sure that our city is safe and that make sure that our residents are doing what they need to do. But if you live somewhere, you can't go on that property, he can't go on that property, but you can report things to him. That will allow him to investigate, am I right? Okay, so that's just something that you need to go, you wanna?
No, and he does uh, work at night and is on call.
Yeah, so that's just something that I, that I. And the weekend.
Correct, and he works during the day.
He came out on a Sunday, so. Um, and we do have business cards for that person, so if you like business cards, um, you can get them from that gentleman standing at the, at the door. So thank you so much.
Introduce him.
Can we move the agenda?
Yes, we can. To you, to the business ministry, Chase Bank is also closing, you know what day that is?
Do I know what day is?
Yeah, they're closing also, aren't they?
Yes.
Do you know what the date of closure?
I do not. I don't. No, I have to find out from Manny.
I think we need to let the residents know that it will be closing, so we will be losing Chase Bank also.
Okay.
Ordinance on second reading, public hearing. Thirty-two dash twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Orange Township, County, at exit state of New Jersey. To approve and adopt the scattered sites redevelopment plan. Implementing specific development regulations. And bulk zoning standard applicable to the scattered sites redevelopment area. All in accordance with local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA forty A colon twelve A dash. One et cetera. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Ms. Samuels, Ms. Gibbs, and the gentleman right there in the front. And Mr. Gibbs.
All I have to say is vote no.
Thank you ma'am, Ms. Gibbs.
Just for clarity, do I need to state my name and address again? So I think um. It needs to be revised. I know there, there's like fifty-two listed here. But I think someone needs to go out with. I guess the, the task force or whatever and kinda revisit these properties that are listed, cuz I don't think they all meet the criteria. Uh, that's listed here. So I would vote no, or suggest vote no, until it's uh, the sites are revisited.
Thank you ma'am, gentlemen, sir. You wanna come up? Okay, Mr. Gibbs and then Ms. Tannen, she can go for, okay.
Rachel Tannen. Uh, I had previously asked at a council meeting about notification. How would these property owners notify? Cuz I'm sure any one of you will go to war if your property made it on this list and you didn't know about it. Especially if it was totally rehabbed. And I'm sure most of these um, vacant properties. Will end up being apartment buildings. And our vice president, Kamala Harris, she's pushing for home ownership. So I hope when you take these properties. That will be the focus, no more apartment buildings, home ownership.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Gibbs.
I'll make it quick. So there was a program that Newark did roughly two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I, I can't remember exactly the year, apologize about that. Uh, but the program in my opinion was a success. The program itself, the city of Newark took every vacant lot that they had and actually sold it to the residents. Of the city of Newark with the expectation of that person purchased that empty lot to build a home. Two family, a two-family home, alright? With the expectation on the build it, they live in it for three years and then after that they can move. My suggestion and recommendation, perhaps we could do the same thing. Maybe some of these empty lots that's on this list that I called out earlier, you guys be willing to sell it at extremely discounted rate. To one of the residents here in the great city of Orange, so we can build a home. So we can provide this home opportunity and pass it down to our childrens. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close citizen comments.
Motion to close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson.
Second.
Motion to close citizen comments by uh, Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Easton, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Second Ross.
Motion by Councilmember Montague III, second by Councilmember Ross on the motion.
Yes, on the motion, um. Uh, Madam Kirk, uh, Council President.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I, I respectfully request that um, we uh, um. Hold this and so that we could um, or whoever, um. Uh, add these properties on this list just to, I know you said that was scripted before Mr. BA, but I think that it should be uh, uh, amended. Again. Um, so I can feel comfortable um, with uh, voting um, for. So um, I don't know if we wouldn't do a, a, a motion to table so we could be amended on the right way. I don't.
So let me just ask. Are you looking to have the properties that are recommended to be included? Reviewed to ensure that they meet the criteria? Because if you're looking to have properties added, that's a completely.
No, 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 not added, the ones that aren't, the ones that's, that's on here.
Okay, so if that's the consensus of the body, then I would recommend that you table the ordinance. And then I'll have the planners go and do a. Quick review of the fifty-two properties and present me with a list to make sure that all of the properties meet the criteria. Alright, that none of them have been rehabbed since they last looked. Thank you.
And also on that motion, I wanted to ask, I, cuz I know I, we don't own, the city doesn't own. The majority of these property.
We don't own any of them.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So Council President. The motion to table. My table will supersede the motion that's on the floor, won't it?
Yes.
Table supersedes the motion on the floor.
Yes.
So I make a motion to table.
Second Coley.
Was second.
It was second by Jamie Summers Johnson.
Can I do on that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And if the, while we're doing the table and investigating the properties, if there is a way. As Mr. Gibbs say, that we could offer the residents to buy those properties, I think there should be a stipulation. That if you purchase that lot, you have to have something on it within a certain amount of time. Those, cuz people will purchase those lots and hold on them for years as a tax write-off, and we still get nothing done. So if we need to. Pass some legislation to make sure that if somebody buys that lot. We give them what, six months to put something on it?
For a land sale, right?
Well, it's two different things, right? The properties that the city owns, we would come to the council with a program that's. That is along the lines of what you're talking about. These properties are not owned by the city. And the whole purpose of putting them into scattered sites is to encourage redevelopment. They have to be redeveloped in accordance with the zone that they're in. So um, a, a twenty-five foot wide lot. Is going to be redeveloped whether they're a single or two-family house. You know, some of the larger properties depends on, on how they're assembled. Whether or not there are properties on either side, but that's, that's a completely different issue than the home property. Than the property sale issue, which can be addressed at a different.
And I do see a lot of. Uh, multi-family homes going up these days. Couple in my ward that they've done, so people are starting to do that again.
Anyone else on the motion? See another roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
To table.
Yes.
Um, Councilwoman Easton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III.
Yes.
Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson.
Yes.
And Council President.
Yes.
So this item has been tabled. Is there a timeframe for the table?
I'm gonna have, it, it can be brought up at any time, but I'm gonna have to speak to the planners to see how long it's gonna take them to do the review. So I can't give you a date.
Thank you. Thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance, rescinding ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-four. Amending chapter two hundred dot ten dot two entitled Residential Permit Parking Zone A. Permit parking hours on Oakwood Avenue between Central and Wilson Place. There are any citizens who wish to speak?
Gloria Stewart, sixty-two Hampton Terrace, Orange. Um, I would like uh, just to restate what this, when you rescind it, what are you rescinding? And what is it now, uh, going to be af- after you vote? Is that asking too much?
For thirty-eight twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
The handicap parking?
No, no, she's talking about the permit parking hours on Oakwood.
Yeah, that's what I. Oh, permit parking, okay.
That's in my neighborhood.
Yes, okay.
You said it's they're changing the hours that they can do the permit parking, but it's only up to Wilson Avenue.
I understand that, I was trying to understand what the hour change is, is that asking too much if it is thirty-eight? Well, before I think it was, wasn't it from?
Okay. So we.
We're rescinding an ordinance that was adopted and then wanted to be changed. So it was to change hours of residential permit parking in a specific area. They adopted, they amended the ordinance that was originally adopted. And in order to do the amendment, they had to do this.
Understand that.
She needs to know what the hours were.
The hours on Ms. Stewart.
And what the hours are now.
Just asking if that's, you know, if you don't wanna do it, it's okay. I understand the language itself, but I would just, you know.
The hours are the same hours that they are on Hampton Terrace, so the police can start giving tickets at four P M. Versus the two A M.
And I understand the language.
Okay.
Any other citizens wish to speak? Motion to close citizen.
Motion to close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson.
Back in Montague.
Motion to close citizens' comments by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Montague III. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Second Wooten.
Motion to adopt by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Wooten on the motion. See another roll call, Councilmember Coley.
Yes.
Councilmember Easton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III.
Yes.
Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson.
Yes.
Council President Wooten.
Yes.
Motion pass. Forty dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance to amend and supplement the code of the City of Orange Township, chapter one eighty-five, entitled Streets and Sidewalk. To create article thirteen entitled Street Construction Repair Maintenance. Sponsored by Councilmember Ross. Are there any citizens who wish to speak? Motion to close citizen comments.
Motion to close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson.
Second, Montague.
No, Councilwoman Easton was in there, she's either first or second.
I did the first one.
And then Summers Johnson.
Okay. Sorry. I'm trying to speak into the mic so I can hear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Second.
Second, Easton.
Motion to adopt by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Easton. On that motion. See another roll call, Councilmember Coley.
Yes.
Councilmember Easton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III.
Yes.
Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson.
Yes.
Council President Wooten.
Yes.
Motion pass. Forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, chapter two hundred dash thirty-three, entitled Vehicle and Traffic. Section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, Handicap Parking Spaces, three fifty-three Alden Street. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Motion to close. Nope, she coming. Gloria Stewart, sixty-two Hampton Town, Orange.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanna know uh, the handicap uh, space. And I don't know if this is appropriate for this, but in terms of parking. Uh, other people with handicap spaces, is this also noted? You know, like this is for this particular vehicle, or anybody with a handicap can do it, you know, would that be clarified? And then I've also noticed that sometimes when you have a handicap parking, a, a car, will put half their car in.
In that space, so is there any way to make those parkers aware of? The fact that they don't need to put half of their car within this, that space? And that just from my understanding.
You have to call the police for that. Call the police, have them, give them a ticket. That's the only way that you can solve that. Is call the police when that happens to you and they come out and they give a ticket to that car. So the owner know the next time not to put half of his car in your parking space.
And one of the other things I wanted to say real quickly is that, and I'm, Vinnie's not here tonight. I I'm going to alert our police department, they need to pay special attention to the handicap parking spaces. Cause a lot of cars in there do not have handicap plates. So no matter whose car it is or whose spot it is, if it's a car in that spot that does not have, needs to get a ticket. It needs to get a ticket.
Absolutely. And Councilwoman Eason, um and this is probably to you, to the business administrator, like some spaces. That have handicap parking spaces, the space is like two car spaces long instead of. One, so I guess it should be a standard amount. You know what I mean? Like some, some people have like two, they can park two cars in a handicap space. And only one person has the handicap, decaf.
I'll check out. If you have a.
I can give you an address.
That would be great.
And if I may, and on that note, sometime vehicles are a little bit longer than their regular ones, so you have to. See what the average is, standard, that's just food for thought.
It is, alright, thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other citizen wish to speak? Motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close, Ross.
Second?
Second, Wooten.
Motion to close citizen comments by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Wooten. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt? Move, Wooten.
Second, Eason.
Motion um to adopt by Councilmember Wooten, second by Councilmember Eason. On the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-two dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred. Dash thirty-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one handicap parking spaces. Eighty-six Ward Street. Any citizens wish to speak? Motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close, Ross.
Second, Wooten.
Motion to close citizen comments by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Wooten. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt? Move, Wooten.
Second, Coley.
Motion by Councilmember Wooten, second by Councilmember Coley. On that motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance on introduction, first reading. Forty-six dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one handicap parking spaces, five thirty-eight Liberty Street. Is there a motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Second, Eason.
Motion to adopt on first by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Eason. On the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled. Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one handicap parking spaces, three fifty-four Chestnut Street. Motion to adopt on first?
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, that's Cleveland.
Cleveland Street.
Oh, three fifty-four Cleveland Street. Motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Second, Eason.
Motion to adopt on first by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Eason. CNN on that motion, roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred. Entitled Vehicles and Track, Traffic, Section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one. Handicap Parking Spaces, three six zero South Center Street. Motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt, Ross. Coley.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Coley. On the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Orange Township, Essex County, New Jersey. Authorizing assignment of the financial agreement relating to block three zero zero two, lot six. More commonly known as one hundred Main Street, Orange, New Jersey, VA one hundred M Urban Renewal LLC. To BSD one hundred Main Urban Renewal LLC. Motion to adopt on first?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Montague the third, second by Councilmember Eason. On the motion?
On the motion? Council President threw you to the business administrator, um be hard like. There were questions raised about this. Um do we actually have? Um a report stating that, that questions were raised? And that there was an investigation or we did look into the background of all the businesses involved?
Every. Application for a pilot agreement requires disclosures.
Right.
The disclosures have to be updated, they have been updated. The background checks and the questions regarding the individual financial inv- investors have been addressed. And there is, i- in addition, there's a. Fiscal responsibility and a fiscal impact statement. That addresses where the construction financing comes from and how viable it is. So yes, those questions have been answered.
Okay, I just want to make sure, cause there was, that was a huge allegation or a huge concern. And so I just want to make sure that as a council member, we are all protecting ourselves because if something else. Does appear later on down the line, we are all gonna be held liable. Um not only that, but it was mentioned that some parts of the fiscal reporting was not included. Uh it was not stated how they were gonna be funding some of this project. Um and then also the other question I had was, are they gonna be using the same plans? The same site plan and the same design?
Yeah, they can't change any of that. All this is, is an assignment of the agreements. Because of a new financial investor.
Okay, so. I might be overstepping, that might be a planning board thing, but so they wouldn't have to go back to the drawing board and start from the, from the beginning?
No, in fact, the documents that were already approved in the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement contemplate situations like this. As I said, there's in a change of assignment provision and a change of control provision, when those are triggered. That's when we have to come back to the council for approval to do the assignment and the change of control. So the original documents contemplate situations like this.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
No.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Council President Wooten?
Yes.
So that's six yeas, one no, the motion passed. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered. Oh, the final reading for the ordinances that just passed is November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Council members, are there any items that you wish to remove for a separate vote? CNN?
I, I have a few, Council President.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
I would like to move four eighty-two dash twenty twenty-four. And I'll leave the resolutions on there. I mentioned them earlier, that's it.
So the consent agenda consists of four seven six, four seven seven, four seven eight, four seven nine, four eight oh. Four eight one, four eight three, four eight four, four eight five, four eight six, four eight seven. Four eighty-eight, four eighty-nine, four ninety, four ninety-one, four ninety-two, four ninety-three, four ninety-four. And four ninety-five.
Motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second, Coley.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilwoman Eason, second by Councilmember Coley. On the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wooten?
Yes.
The motion passed. Uh four eighty-two dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the municipal council of the city of Orange Township, exit county, New Jersey. Authorizing assignment of community benefits agreement relating to block three zero zero two, lot six. More commonly known as one hundred Main Street, Orange, New Jersey. From VA one hundred M Urban Renewal LLC to BSD one hundred. Main Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second, Coley.
Motion by Councilmember Eason, second by Councilmember Coley. On that motion?
On the motion? So this is going back to the same um developer in the same location. Um looking at some of those plans that are, that are destined or proposed for the main street. I thought that we wanted to keep majority of our businesses on the main street in the business district, but when I'm looking at these plans. The first level is dedicated only to parking. It's not dedicated to a mixed use or additional commercial space. So that's why I asked a question in regards to, are they gonna keep the same design? Um because we have that new sign, you know, that digital sign that says welcome to Orange. And then you're just gonna hit, you're just gonna get hit with walls and cars. That's all you're gonna see when you enter our city. You're not gonna see new spaces for businesses. You're not gonna see new public spaces. Um we do have, you know, military park or memorial park, it's been renovated. But we don't have any additional open spaces either. So I do not approve of this design. Um and I feel like our community benefits agreement should be more than just money. I feel like there should be a dedicated effort and very specific as to what they're going to provide or. Contribute or donate to our community. And that's my statement.
Anyone else on the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eason?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
No.
Uh Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
That's six yeas, one nay, motion passed. Are there any other items the council wish to discuss?
Council President?
Yes.
Just one announcement, the play at the board meeting for tomorrow night is canceled. There is no playing aboard meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Council President? Yes, um also wanted to mention, because we won't be back until November, everyone please have a safe Halloween. Uh the city of Orange is gonna have a Halloween event on Sunday, October twenty-seventh. And then over by Orange High School, we will be having the trunk or treat again on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Please come out and support the students and the kids in the neighborhood. It's their fifth year anniversary, so everyone please remain safe. And uh see you all in November. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Summers Johnson?
Your second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Eason. All in favor?[1788.26]